Call to order the city council meeting of May 4th, 2021. Can I have the roll call?
Mr. Fields?
Here.
Miss Curler?
Here.
Mr. Waters?
Here.
Mrs. Bishop?
Here.
Ms. Quidnow?
I'm here.
Thank you.
All right. So all rise for the pledge of allegiance. All right, if I can get a motion to approve the city council meeting minutes of April 20th and April 27th, 2021?
I'll move adoption of the city council minutes from April 20th and April 27th of 2021.
I'll second. Any discussion or corrections?
Yes, can we make a correction, please? Do you want me to just go ahead? Okay, city council minutes, April 20th, says council president Michael Foster called the meeting, and that should be, I feel like I'm echoing, but that should be Steve Wilkie.
Yeah, it should say, uh, city manager, right?
Can you repeat that, Misty?
She's correct, it should say city manager Steve Wilkie. It was a template, I apologize.
Thank you. Any other corrections?
Do we need to make in a? Formalize an emotion?
Okay, so I can say I motion to amend the city council minutes to strike council president Michael Foster and to replace that with city manager Steve Wilkie.
Can we have a second? Can we get a roll call?
Can, I apologize, there was feedback. Can somebody repeat who the second was?
The second was Ms. Curler.
Thank you. Ms. Curler?
Hi.
Mr. Waters?
Hi.
Mrs. Bishop?
Her mic hasn't connected, her external mic hasn't connected, so she had, she still has to use the internal one.
Misty, did you want that roll call vote? That was yes from Mrs. Bishop.
Yes, please. Thank you. Ms. Quidnow?
Same for Michelle, she needs to.
I'm working on it, I'm sorry. Yes.
Thank you.
And your external mic isn't working either, you'll need to have Dave give you a hand, too.
Sorry, Steve, I won't be able to understand you because Dave's working with Catherine over here, so I can't hear what you say on the speaker.
So Misty, Misty, do you have all that roll call through?
So far, I've received yeses from Ms. Curler, Mr. Waters, Mrs. Bishop, and Ms. Quidnow, and now I'm looking for Mr. Fields.
Aye.
Oh, you, motion passed five zero.
Let's mute it here. You see it?
Oh, here.
No, no.
Okay. Yeah, I knew that.
Okay.
Sorry about the delay.
All right, I think we have all of our technical difficulties settled now, so we're moving to item five, which is correspondence.
Mr. Waters?
Yep.
So you amended that motion with Ms. Bishop's motion, so now you need to vote on the original motion, Ms. Curler's motion, and.
With the amendment.
Which is the change to the April 20th meeting and no change to April 27th. So we need a roll call and get a call to roll on the original motion.
So the original motion with the amendment, do we have a, do we need a motion or just a roll call on that? Just a roll call, right? All right. Misty, can we have another roll call?
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Mrs. Bishop?
Aye.
Ms. Quidnow?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Miss Curler?
Aye.
Motion passed five zero, thank you.
Thank you. All right, now we'll move to correspondence. Ms. Quidnow, you're kind of busy right now. Mr. Fields, any correspondence?
I had none at this time.
No correspondence.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes, correspondence from a couple of people about the new construction projects on the south of town, mainly the new, I don't want to say apartments or condominiums, whichever one it is, but the ones going on in the south part.
All right, Ms. Quidnow?
Um, just some communication with regard to Parks Board activities, so that's all.
All right, and I just had a correspondence from the Sandy Beach Mobile Home Organization, and they're having a meeting the end of May, and was inviting some of us to that meeting, so that was, that was all I had. Now we'll move to item six, questions and public comment. The public is encouraged to address the council at this time regarding items on the agenda. Public comment may also be made at this time on items that are not on the agenda if you've registered as city clerk before the meeting has been called to order. The state's open meeting laws discourage action by the council on items not listed on the agenda. Please keep your comments limited to three minutes and state your name and address when starting your comments, and fill out the sign-in sheet provided. So the floor is open?
Mr. Waters? I don't believe his microphone is on. I'm not sure if Attorney Dreschek maybe run over? Or Dave? Thank you.
Can you hear me? Can you hear me?
Yep. Sorry about the technical difficulties.
Test, one, two, three. Yeah, you should get it now. Maybe it's because the screen sharing was up, I'm not sure.
Okay, we'll try this again. Take three.
We can hear you with the.
It's not recording it? Is that what you're saying? Okay. Okay, okay. Well, 2016, 17, 18, maybe 19, I don't remember. We spoke about what the progress was going to be, what the plan was going to be, and at that time, we suggested to the council that we have people that are stakeholders involved where they might be able to advise on certain aspects of the plan, and that was not something that they were interested in doing at the time. So now we are very well progressed in, in what's going on down at Sandy Beach. I don't know how many of you or if any of you have been down there, but they did pour the, the double lot for the, for the launch. They have it pinned up, I think they're about ready to do the blacktop, don't know, okay? But I just want to share a couple thoughts, because I talked to Steve Wilkie last week, and he said he's tried to champion some of the things I brought up, but no one seemed to go along with Steve on that, so here's where I'm going, if this works. You might as well just get your roller skates on, and, okay?
I think what happens is when that comes up.
It takes off the speaker?
Yeah, because we're going from the screen to the window.
Okay.
And then you don't have a mic.
All right. Well, a picture paints a thousand words, so.
We'll try it, but I think that's the way it's going to be.
All right. There it is.
Okay, then you can just air it now.
Got her.
So this is where I would sit on my front deck a year ago, and that would be my view, okay? And all that is what we call green space, which was open for boaters, open for people to picnic and all that, and it was, I've been there 10 years, and that's what I had, okay? Now what I have is this. That was taken today. We took away the view, we took away the green space, that's where the parking lot is for 15 spaces for boats and trailers, and it'll soon be blacktop, marked off, and I think they're going to be charging for the parking. Notice the fence is gone. There was a fence there before, I can back up if you want me to. See the fence? Okay, that's gone. That was one of the first things to go, as well as some of the trees. So this is what I got today. Don't really know what I'm going to have tomorrow, or at the end of the year, but I think they're planning on being done in June. This is what I run into every summer. If you count back five spaces, there's a sign there the city has up that has orange flags sticking out the side and pinwheels on it, and it says no parking, and that's what you get every year, almost every weekend. So what I have proposed is where that sign is, where it says no parking, you put a sign up that says up to $1,500 fine for not, for parking here. The reason I say that is people just ignore the sign, and they go ahead and do it anyway, okay? You know, and it has to be enforced probably by the town or the sheriff, okay? But if you put that up there, I think it'll be a big deterrent, but that's what they do, and they say, I don't care about the fine because it's only $5. Well, if you say up to $1,500, I think it'll. Huh? $10? $10? It's not worth me pulling my ice coolers down the street and parking up the street and going back and forth, so I'll just pay the $10. What I'm asking at the hydrant, which is in the city limits, that a sign go up right by the fire hydrant that is already there and says, you know, we're going to escalate the potential of fine. Okay? The second thing I'm asking for is that there's signage on both sides of the road that you're not supposed to park there, all the way up Sandy Beach. Right now, it only goes, I think, from the beginning of the park down, okay? Because otherwise, you're going to be inundated. The Andersons, which are friends of mine, had also expressed concern, they said they couldn't make it tonight, they're at 326 Sandy Beach Road, that when the parking lot is revamped, their view is going to be completely gone. So that's why we progressed towards the no parking on both sides, beyond where it is right now, okay? The last thing, which I didn't think about when I was putting the bullet points together, was that the lighting, and Steve Wilkie and I talked about this earlier last week, if the parking lot is expansive as it's going to be, and they have lights for people to help them with their parking, back in 2017, 2018, Steve and I talked about, well, they'll tilt the lights towards the lake, because otherwise, if they're coming towards my house, it's like living across from Lambeau Field. You know, my whole house is going to be lit up, and so he said that there's a potential that they could put shades around the light, so that there's only so many candle or luminins or however way you want to measure it, not coming away from the lake. So that's the one thing I think you can be involved in, I think the signage is something you can be involved in, and the enforcement for your part. I know you don't have to do the town, and the town starts right about where the fire hydrant is, okay? So that's my request, and if you have any questions, I'll entertain them, sure, go ahead. Oh, I'm sorry, Mike Wolf, 356 Sandy Beach, Lake Mills. Okay. Well, thank you.
All right, is there any other comments tonight?
I think Butch has got some. I hit the stop sharing.
There we go. Anybody online that wanted to share anything with the council? Anybody online? Doesn't look like it. All right, so we'll move forward from public comment to the city managers' report.
I have nothing to report tonight.
Thanks, Steve. Any questions for Steve? All right, item eight, acceptance of minutes from the police and fire commission. Can I have a motion?
I move to accept the minutes from the police and fire commission.
Those just go on, on record as being accepted, they don't need a motion.
You're awesome, Misty, thank you. All right, any? Guess we'll move on to item nine, which is the board appointments. So what we're going to do here is take it in two groups, we'll do the first group, which is the city council member appointments, and then we'll do the second group, which is the city residents, and we'll take them in two batches. So if, after they've been read, if you have any suggestions or if you want to strike a name, I will need to make a motion to do that, all right? So Misty, can you read off the city council member appointments?
Catherine Bishop to Plan Commission, Steve Fields to Public Works Board, Michelle Quidnow to Parks Board, Lisa Curler to Library Board, Greg Waters, Economic Development Commission.
Can we have a motion of acceptance?
I move that we adopt a slate of candidates recommended by the council president, as shown.
I second.
All right, the motion by Mrs. Curler, the second by Mrs. Bishop. Any comment or questions? Roll call?
Mrs. Bishop?
Aye.
Ms. Quidnow?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Motion passed five zero.
All right, can you read the city resident appointments?
Josh Schumacher to Plan Commission, Greg Polacek and Bennett Ruplinger to Public Works Board, Scott Thompson to Parks Board, Kristi Wendt and Wendy Brockert to Library Board, Todd Temperley to Zoning Board of Appeals, Todd Temperley to Economic Development Commission, excuse me, Robert Volnek to Joint Rock Lake Committee, Josh Schumacher to Board of Review, Pamela Lozares and Miranda Heimstreet to the Ethics Board.
Can we have a motion for acceptance?
I move to accept the residents to their committees as written, as stated. I second.
All right, so we have a motion from Ms. Quidnow, and a second from Mrs. Bishop. Any comment? Seeing none, roll call vote, please.
Ms. Quidnow?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Mrs. Bishop?
Aye.
Motion passed five zero.
All right, thank you. Next is city manager appointments. Did you want me to handle this, Steve, or did you want to go with that?
I can take it.
Okay.
I want to notify the council that I'm appointing Teresa Rassi to the Housing Authority, and Dennis Griffey and Jen Olson to the Police and Fire Commission. Technically, this is a notification, but historically, the council has voted on it, so, either way.
Do we have a motion for acceptance of the city managers' appointments?
I move that we approve the slate of city manager appointments, see as presented.
I second.
So motion by Mrs. Curler, and a second by Ms. Quidnow. Any comment? Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Mrs. Bishop?
Aye.
Ms. Quidnow?
Aye.
Motion passed five zero.
All right, thank you. It's nice to have all those appointments done, we'll have some, some busy boards to, to move forward with here, so looking forward to that. All right, here's the fun part of the meeting, resolution 21-26, recognition of city service of Michael Foster. So we have a city council resolution, let me read that for us real quick. Might have to get my glasses out. All right. Resolution 2126, in appreciation of public service to the city of Lake Mills, Michael Foster. Whereas Michael Foster has served for seven and a half years as a dedicated and valuable member of the Lake Mills City Council, and whereas Michael Foster provided dedication and service to the city of Lake Mills at a level expected of a United States Marine, and whereas Michael Foster, while resolute in his belief, always remained open to others' viewpoints and communication on local issues, and worked effectively with elected officials and staff to influence and achieve goals that were important to the city of Lake Mills, and whereas Michael Foster has provided leadership to and respected for those, and respect for those around him that has contributed to the betterment of Lake Mills. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the city council of the city of Lake Mills does hereby wish to express their gratitude for all his contributions and acknowledges on behalf of the citizens of Lake Mills his devotion, passion, dedication, and public service given to the city of Lake Mills, which will soon be resolved on this fourth day of May twen- of May 4th, fourth day of May 2021, as soon as we have a vote. Sorry about the feedback there, but hopefully everybody heard that. So any, any comment before we vote on this? I guess, guess we need a motion.
I'd move to approve resolution 21-26.
I second.
Good motion by Mr. Fields, and a second by Ms. Quidnow. Any comment?
I'd just like to give my personal thanks to Mike, and one of the things I particularly have been impressed with you in the last year or two are your articles in the newspaper and your efforts to try to communicate what's going on to the community, and I want to thank you for that.
And I would like to follow up with a huge thank you to you, serving as a mentor since our meeting even last year, summer, and I appreciate your communication and your willingness to talk with us.
Mr. Foster, thank you again for your service, both as a Marine and to the city of Lake Mills, we appreciate it.
Mike, I'm looking forward to many phone calls and, and assistance in my, in, over the next year, as we, as we work through some of the issues here at city council and guidance as far as your long-term standing as, as president of city council, so. Anything else? So we had a motion, we had a second, let's go for a roll call.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Mrs. Bishop?
Aye.
Ms. Quidnow?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Motion passed five zero.
So we have a unanimous passing of this? So I'm going to come out and shake your hand real quick, we will have a signed resolution, and we'll mail that to you as soon as that's all framed up and it's real, real nice, but I wanted to thank you formally, real quick here.
All right, can you hear me? Is it coming through now?
Mike, can I?
Okay, good. First off, a couple bits of information I want to put out there, a couple congratulations first to the fire department for their, for their new certification, that's going to help them, and it's going to help our community immensely, so I'm glad that was finally finished, and I also like to congratulate our new, newly appointed police officer today, I believe it was Zach Roberts, so if you haven't met Zach yet, get a chance to get down, say hi to him, and congratulate him, so he took over for Officer Doug Messman that retired last month, so I want to congratulate both the fire department and our new police officer, and congratulate every single one of you up there, including you, Catherine, thank you for taking over the spot. Thank you for taking over the spot and I hope it's everything that you want it to be. And if nothing else, it could be a great stepping stone to something else if you really have desires to move forward. So, I'm glad you're up there. I'm glad Michelle's up there. I'm glad Greg's there. Glad Steve's there and I'm glad Lisa that you guys are all there. I think as a whole body, you pretty much fit the bill for what our community looks like right now. Could we have a little bit more diversity? Probably, but you know what? I think we fit every little nuance in there and I think you guys will do great things for our community. I have driven down by Sandy Beach and I saw the work that's going on down there and I do really enjoy seeing the work that's going on down there. First off, for safety, so as people will complain about certain things, the first thing we have to look at is, is it safe for our community, is it safe for our families? So, I think that that's going to make a big difference down there. And whatever way you guys go in the future with the rest of those projects down there, just know you've got somebody here that has your back on all of it. So, if you have any questions on what our thoughts were, why we did anything that we did down there, by all means, you have my number, call me. If you have any questions that you don't feel comfortable asking staff, by all means, call me. I'll be here for every single one of you. So, whoever it is or whatever questions you have, by all means, reach out. I hope to get back involved again. I'm hoping to come back to the Plan Commission sometime probably the end of June after I finally get some vacation. It's been a long, long time since I've been able to take a vacation between plan, city council, work, you name it. I've got so many things going on and now I can step back, relax and focus on my family for a little bit, or at least my wife for a little bit and come back recharged. So, thank you so much for this honor and I hope to hear from every single one of you.
Thanks, Mike. Appreciate the service once again and thanks for the support as well. All right, so we'll move on to the Rock Lake Cemetery Platte. So, we have a city council motion, 21-5-1-1.
I'll make a motion to approve, motion 21-5-1-1 regarding the Rock Lake Cemetery Platte.
I second.
So, we have a motion and a second.
Mr. Waters, would it be okay if I read the title formally?
Yes, would you please? That'd be great. Thanks, Misty.
Motion 21-5-1-1, Platte Approval, Rock Lake Cemetery Platte 2021.
All right, is there any background or discussion on this from the city staff?
Yes. The previous council had authorized us to go ahead and do the final platte in the cemetery. So, that was done last January. We had Strand do the initial design. We now are on our third one, so Brandon, can you show that? And then go over some of the details. Dwayne's also on, so if you need any background. One of the key issues that occurred back in like 2001, Dwayne, was we ran a water main from Pine Street North to Tyrrhenia Park Road and we ran it through the cemetery. And so, one of the things that was part of this platte that needed to be corrected was is that there's an easement and there are statutory requirements for how far away things have to be from a water main. So, Brandon had to do some corrections to the platte. I hope that if you don't have them, that Brandon can show them. Can you show them, Brandon?
Yeah, I'm working on it. Just a second here.
Background on 2001. Steve, I believe that was when QuickTrip was requesting annexation or requesting water. Actually, no, it wasn't. It it was a little bit more history to that. The parcel that Lake Mills Market is currently on was being discussed as a development in the town and the town was discussing doing their own water district. And when we got notice of that, the council decided to run a water main through the cemetery to that point because the DNR went to award a grant to the town for a water district if the city had water in the front yard of the property being developed. And then as that occurred, then QuickTrip quick contacted us and got on too because their wells were continually failing because of gas contamination.
Thanks, Steve, for the clarification. So, can everybody see the shared platte? I know it might be a little zoomed out. I can zoom in a little bit here, but I just wanted to give people some scale here. This platte is currently city-owned land. It's off the west edge of what is now graves. It's basically just an empty grass field with a few trees in it right now. And so, like Steve had said, you know, the city council decided to move forward the platte. I believe the existing cemetery is starting to fill up. So, this would platte out basically the remainder of the city-owned cemetery land. You know, we're showing quite a few blocks of graves here. I'll zoom in a little bit. Let's see here. So, we have, you know, a few different block styles that are kind of corresponding to some of these, you know, rectangles on the platte. In total, we're showing about 2,058 new graves currently on here. I say currently. You know, this is a lot of graves. You know, in the future, say hopefully many, many years in the future, there's definitely spaces where you could continue to add graves here or there, still within city property. But this was, you know, kind of the platte that should last you, man, many decades from my understanding. So, I guess the one difference that we were discussing with the water main that is different, this document that you're looking at right now is different from what was on the city council agenda in the sense that we had not shown the water main, which is right along the edge of the road there. And so, we had to kind of strip away a row of graves is really the only difference. And so, we lost about 60 graves. And we're also now showing the water main and I'll try and zoom in there. It's this gray W line here, if you can see that. And we would have, you know, there's a statute that requires that the water main is eight feet off of a grave site. So, that is shown right now about 11 feet off a grave site, 10 to 11 feet off the graves. And then, you know, there would be, you know, this is all city-owned property, but, you know, it would probably be most formal and correct to create a water main easement that goes across there. I don't believe there is one already. Stephen Doyne would know more about that going back to the original project, but I don't believe there is one. Correct me if I'm wrong, maybe.
I believe you're correct, Brandon. We can double-check our files, but since it was city-owned property, I do not believe at that time in 2001, we did an easement for it.
Sure. So, I mean, we're showing a space for an easement there. That's what these kind of black dashed lines are. That's a 15-foot wide easement. You know, sometimes the city requires a little bit wider easement for water main. You know, the water main's typically, you know, six and a half, seven feet deep. But in this case, you know, I think a 15-foot easement may be good enough potentially or we could just widen it and incorporate part of the road to the east. And so, that I guess is the main change from what was included in the council agenda packet today. And so, I believe the city staff is just asking for, you know, council approval to formally file this platte. I mean, this is page one, so the second page is, has a bunch of signatory blocks on it for, you know, there's a council resolutions page, you know, that has to say council resolution, this number dated this day, you know, approve this platte and then Misty would sign it. A couple other people have to sign it and then we would formally record this platte with Jefferson County. And then that would also then allow the city to begin selling these grave sites to people. I would point out that we currently only have roadway access to the far eastern set of graves. You know, there's a bunch of dashed lines here shown. You can see my cursor, hopefully. Those would be future roadways. So, right now, there's a roadway off to the east side of some of these new grave blocks. So, you know, it would be logical to me that you could start selling some of these graves kind of along that road if you'd like. I guess you could sell some of the internal ones, but there's just really no way to get there unless you drive across the grass, which I suppose is possible. But I just thought I'd point that out that, you know, people could start buying these graves then at any point, is my understanding. Also note that we have a big square designated for a columbarium. My understanding is that's where, you know, ashes are placed and so that would be a, you know, some sort of structure. You know, whatever that, we have no details on what that might be at this point. I think sometimes it can be a true building. Sometimes it's more of just like a wall, you know, where you can kind of approach from both sides. But that would be something to be installed or decided on in the future. I guess I'm trying to see if I missed anything here. Oh, another important part to note is a lot of these circles in 24, if you can see that, 27, those are property pins basically that we would be putting in the ground that the sexton would use in the future to lay out where all these graves are exactly. And so, there's quite a few of them. There's about 60 of them, but Rob Getz, you know, Parks Director and the sexton have said, you know, basically the more irons, the better because they're going to have to try and pull these grave locations in by, you know, long tape measures essentially in the future. So, the more information they can have to help them, the better. And then one last thing is I have some, these grave block details are shown here. We also created eight and a half by 11 details for the city to use that you could number, you know, grave block 26 and then within 26, there's 24 graves and you could say lot number 26, grave one belongs to Joe Smith. And they would kind of be in to start kind of keeping records of who owns one or who's buried in one. And so, we have eight and a half by 11 sheets that those would be, I believe, intended to be hard copy kept for the city to, you know, have in a binder or something to start filling up these graves. So, I guess that's probably enough of a spiel for now. Anybody has any questions?
The columbarium is a result of the fact that when I got here in 2000, 90% of the burials were not ashes, not and now it's almost 50/50. So, we decided that a columbarium would be a good product to have in the cemetery. A lot of people still bury them on the grave sites and they'll, there is rules on how many ashes you can put into the, each one of the grave sites. So, as he noted, there's quite a few spaces available here. It does follow along with the agreement we did when we took over the site from the Rock Lake Cemetery Association, which represented a group of churches. So, other than that, I'm ready to answer questions too.
Can you hear me now? There we go. This may have been answered, but in 1948, that's when you took over the cemetery as far as the city took over the cemetery. Was that land that we're talking about today, was that acquired at that point or was that acquired later?
I believe that all came with the cemetery at that point in time. I did not find any other recordings of us buying additional land.
Any other questions? Yes.
Oh, yeah, this is Ms. Curler. I have a question and a comment. My question is for procedurally, are the neighbors on Pine Street notified of this platte? Is that an ordinance requirement for them to be notified?
No. Plattes don't have any notification requirements.
Okay. And then I guess a comment on page two of the platte. It appears that there's an error in who's listed as the corporate owner. It's mentioned to be Paul Gusty, which I think is the owner of another property that we dealt with a while back on a CSM. So, I don't know if we can ask for a correction and still approve that tonight or do we need to ask it to be corrected and have it come back on a future agenda? And maybe Steve, you can look at it and confirm whether there is in fact an error there.
There is an error.
Steve, I believe the one that was posted to the council agenda was a slightly dated version. I'm sharing my screen right now. Can you guys see that? So, I believe that that has been corrected. Is that where you were looking, Ms. Curler? In the owner's certificate?
Yes, that's the right in the upper right of page two of the platte.
Yeah, so they've corrected it with the new one.
So, what do we need to do procedurally to adopt this since the one that was posted with the agenda had the error?
Well, I think you have two options. Either you, if the platte is acceptable in the form that has been reviewed tonight, specifically the version that Brandon provided, then you can either adopt that platte, amending the motion to reference that change or you could table this until a future meeting and present that map as a comprehensive package and adopt it at that point or take whatever action you deem appropriate at that point.
I guess just to summarize from my perspective.
Did you have a comment, Brandon?
Yeah, I was just going to add, in case you're going to move forward with, you know, the amended version that I presented tonight, the main two changes from what was on the city council agenda was the removal of a few graves due to that water main and then the correction of the owner's certificate. That was, I guess, would summarize the changes for any use in motions and things.
I do have a question regarding, kind of to follow up with Lisa's comment. In looking at the picture, the real picture of the land, I am wondering if it would be advisable to amend the plan to include having some tree line built into the cemetery. I see that there are some trees, but I see some gaps as well. I wonder if that's a possibility.
That's a separate issue. You wouldn't put that on a platte. That's kind of like the roadways and the columbariums. When we actually go to start constructing the improvements, we would look at that. Normally, what you do is put in a fence and then trees are kind of spread out throughout the whole site. So, yeah, there will be some trees. I don't know if we use a tree line. Generally, what we're looking at is a heavy metal fence, generally some type of wrought iron or something along that line.
And the fence was for decorative or for security?
Actually, it's it's more of a definition of the property. Because what used to happen and what we have to do whenever we do work around the cemetery is we have to do an archaeological around all the edges of the cemetery because people a lot of times couldn't afford to buy lots in the cemetery. They would bury people right at the edge.
That scares me that you know this.
I've been in the business a long, long time and cemeteries are things that we deal with all the time. So, if you look at this site right here, when we put in this roadway, we had to do an archaeological. We had to have a pretty substantial archaeological done to verify that there were no potter's fields is what they're called. And so, generally what we do is we, as soon as we get the cemetery platte defined, we put in a fence. We've had budgeted it off and on for years to fence the rest of it. Just it doesn't always make it to the top there. What we've been working on the last several years, if you look at some of those old But we've been working on the last several years, if you look at some of those old 1860 to 1890 headstones, they're really worn. So we've been having a company come in and redo them. So every year we budget about $5,000 for that. The actual fence is going to cost us about $150,000 to fence in what's, what's there now. So that's kind of, we've been kind of banging that around. But yeah, that's generally what you do is try and make sure that you have a fence on the property line. You don't want the trees to create a barrier where you can't see and you can't define the property line. But you do want a lot of trees.
Idea of the fence, I just wanted to make sure that the residents whose properties back up to it have the understanding of where that, their property line. And if they want to put something there to block the view, if that's what they choose, that they would know where to do that.
Yeah, and that would, that would be fine. I, we, I don't have any problem with that. We can, you know, it's just, that's something that we'd have to look at in the future as we move forward.
Thank you.
Ms. Quinler, I just like to add that on the west and the north side, there is actually a pretty substantial evergreen wall already. That's why I brought up this aerial view. And we, we offset where the graves, the new grave blocks are to preserve that. So that, to give it room from where it currently is to grow as well, so that, you know, 20, 30 years from now, that could be maintained. To the south, there are some homes and there's some trees, but they're more like deciduous, they could probably see underneath. But I just wanted to point that out that there is pretty substantial screening on two sides already.
Yeah, this picture is a little bit better than the one that we were given in the notes and I appreciate this. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Could you go back to sheet two, please, of the cemetery plat? And I would like to see the left-hand side because in the one that was provided to the council, there's a set of question marks there. And I want to make sure that's been filled in. Trying to read it here. It said part, and then there was a bunch of question marks. And here it says, part of government lot two. Okay, so that looks like the legal description has been added. Is that correct?
Yes, you have the, the version that made it in the agenda was, we, we recently did some work like today for the water main. But we had a previous version, I think would have corrected some of those, those issues. So I, I believe that that had all been resolved in here.
Okay, and the second question I had relates to the 5.022 acres. When I went to the Jefferson County Property Records website, what looks like to be that same parcel of land is estimated to be 4.862 acres. Could you explain that discrepancy or why that, that difference exists?
Certainly, that's very astute of you. Yeah, it's a, it's because we did a title search for the property. And so oftentimes, especially with parcels of this age, you know, the, if you do an actual title search and you find documents that have meets and bounds descriptions of, of the parcel, when you actually draw those into CAD, it oftentimes gives you a different area. And that's quite common when you're doing, you know, CSM or other kind of registered land survey type, type work. And so, you know, there's a process after this that when you file this plat, I believe Jefferson County may correct that.
Okay, so this new plat description would be more accurate in your estimation.
Correct, yeah, this would be based off of as good a title search information as we could find. And we, we hire a company and then they go to the courthouse and they dig up all the records going back, you know, 100 years for the, for the parcel. And who sold it to, when, and when was it subdivided or broken off? And that's how we kind of draw and drew in the, the boundary of the plat there. So yes, I would say this would be about as accurate as, as you can get and follows kind of standard surveying procedures for the plat.
I should, I should mention for you, Mrs. Bishop, that, that this is not unusual. In fact, the state does not accept any of the old CSMs from the city because they're so inaccurate. So they find that new ones provide a lot more accurate definition and actually get the right spot. So you'll, you'll find that we never take old documents. We require new documents for like annexations and certain types of CSMs and property development projects because they just, they're not very accurate.
Thank you, I understand. In addition to that, I will take Mr. Wilkie, I guess I'll take you, yours or Mr. Druscher's recommendation as to, should we add a parcel number to motion 215-1-1 for clarity? Or is reference to Rock Lake Cemetery plat sufficient in your mind, Mr. Druscher?
I typically do add parcel identification numbers because they're contemporary and I don't believe that there is any change anticipated with the system with regard to numbering properties. But there is the possibility that they do change in the future. When this is recorded as the Rock Lake Cemetery plat, it will be identified on its face. But I, I typically do add parcel numbers to all of my motions and resolutions.
I, I don't have any problem with that either, but like I said, Dan mentioned, they do change. And so sometimes we end up looking for a parcel and can't find it and then it's under some other title. So if you have both of them on there, you're better off.
So then would that mean that we would amend it as it's written? Or what procedure would go in place so that we don't have, you know, 20 years down the line, the next council is not sitting in our shoes and wondering what we were thinking?
I believe your options are the same. You either motion to amend what has been presented and adopt in light of that motion, or you motion to table and wait for complete documents that are to your satisfaction and move forward with those.
To that end, I can make a motion to table this until the next meeting, Mr. Waters, but I will take suggestions.
I would second that motion.
Yes, and I can formalize the motion if that's preferred.
Yeah, so should, should Mrs. Bishop formalize what we're seeking in order to take it off the table? Or, you know, we've, we've identified some additional corrections, I think, in our discussion, but should, should that be formalized?
Within the motion to table? I don't think that's necessary. The amended document will come before you for review.
Is there any issue with tabling this? Is there anything that needed to be done this week? Or was there anything with this original motion that needed to be addressed right away or is it fine waiting a couple of weeks?
I'm, I'm comfortable waiting a couple of weeks. I, I wanted to make sure that it didn't drag out too long, depending on how long I was gone and when Rob would be available. So I, we put it on this one, there, you know, a couple of issues came up in the process, but, so I'm comfortable with waiting. I, I just wanted to make sure Rob was around.
And I don't know if this discussion here is appropriate, Mr. Waters, but could we have the new documents also address the water main easement? Okay.
All right, so there's a motion to table till the next meeting. It's been seconded. Can we have a rule call on that?
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Mrs. Bishop?
Aye.
Ms. Quinler?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Ms. Quinler?
Aye.
Motion pass five zero.
Since the other motion was, was pending, now that it's been, it's wiped off the table at this point, great, fantastic. All right, so we'll move to the next item on the agenda. Resolution 2127, Misty, can you read that?
Resolution 21-27, authorizing the City of Lake Mills to apply for Community Development Investment Grant from Wisconsin Economic Development Corporation, Tyranina Properties 203 North Main, parcel identification numbers 24607131233101 and 24607131233100203 North Main Street, Lake Mills, Wisconsin.
All right. Is there a motion to approve resolution 2127?
I move to approve resolution 2127.
Second.
All right, is there any comment or question, or I guess is there any background from the city before we get into comments and questions?
The city is required to apply for WEDC grants for businesses interested in those types of grants. We were approached and have put together a grant application to go to WEDC on behalf of the owners at 214 North Main Street or 203 North Main Street. And this is the beginning process of getting it into their hands at WEDC. There was a pretty extensive memo attached. Are there any questions related to that?
Doesn't appear that there's, oh, I'm sorry, Mrs. Bishop?
Yes, what conditions are tied to the grant? And if you could just point me to the memo if it's in there, then I can read it myself. I apologize if I missed it.
Project eligible grants are development of significant destination attractions, rehabilitation and reuse of underutilized or landmark buildings, infill development, historic preservation, infrastructure efforts and mixed use developments. This is actually a rehabilitation and reuse of a underutilized building. I don't know that it's a landmark building, but it is one of the significant buildings in our downtown. It's being redeveloped as a restaurant. And the conditions of the grant are generally that they can get up to $250,000 from the state, depending on what their needs are. And they've outlined those. In fact, I thought that was attached.
I guess part of my question is based on a few months ago, the council had to pass a resolution. I want to say it was something related to fair housing and that was a condition of the grant application. Are there any types of conditions that will be tied to this application here in the future?
No, there aren't any like that in this one.
Okay, thank you, and I apologize for not being clear in my first question.
Yeah, this one, there's, there's another document that we had that went into great detail on all the public improvements. They're looking at a pretty substantial amount of public, or not public, but private improvements to the infrastructure or to the building at that site. So it's, they could qualify for quite a bit of money there, but the types of conditions are more about related to preservation of the historic building or those types of things.
Thank you. Steve, what did you say was going to go in there?
A restaurant. It's a, I think it's a restaurant tied to the Tyranina Brewery. And it, it kind of ties together. You have to know how the, the beer licenses work through the state, but they are allowed to have so many sites. And so they actually are looking at developing a restaurant that where they could sell their beer. So it's, it's, looks like it's quite a substantial site.
If Google Maps is giving me the right information, this used to be the old Shopko Pharmacy?
Yeah, yeah, it used to be a pharmacy, it used to be the Culser Pharmacy for me, which was prior to Shopko. And, you know, several before that. So yes, that's the one next to the parking lot, just south of the parking lot, which is then south of the Odd Fellows Building.
Is that just down the road from the Lewis Winery?
Yeah, Lewis Winery, then the Odd Fellows Building, then you got that parking lot. And then you've got the old pharmacy, which is what it's called. It's called the Pharmacy Project. And that would be the building. But they also own the parking lot. So they may do some development in the parking lot.
Okay, Steve, this is the one with the, this address, the north wall has that mural on it, right, with the veterans?
It does.
Is there any other questions? All right, so we have a motion and a second. If there's no further questions, we'll move to a rule call vote. I'm sorry, one more time, Misty?
Mrs. Bishop?
Aye.
Ms. Quinler?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Ms. Quinler?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Motion pass five zero.
Thank you. All right, we'll move to resolution 2128. Misty, can you read that?
City of Lake Mills, resolution 21-28. Resolu, I'm sorry, reduction of financial guarantee, Drummond Crossing condominium development.
All right. Can we get a motion?
I motion to approve resolution 2128.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any background on this from the city?
Yes, city code requires that some type of financial guarantees put up whenever there is construction of public facilities. So in this case, it's water and sewer at this site. They put up an escrow account as the financial guarantee. They had put in They asked for a reduction of $231,000. Our engineer went through and reviewed what had been installed and what was remaining and made a determination that they needed to leave at least $145,775 in the escrow to meet the 125% requirement. That's actually a little bit more. It's like 245 or something like that. Instead of the 231, they asked for the 231. So the motion is worded in a fashion where it allows that if they want the 247 or whatever it is, we'll give it to them. But it, the key in here is that we have to maintain the 145,775.
Which represents 125% of the infrastructure costs that are yet to be completed.
All right, is there any questions? Seeing no questions, let's move to a rule call.
Ms. Quinler?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Ms. Quinler?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Mrs. Bishop?
Aye.
Motion pass five zero.
All right. This is the third reading, reading of ordinance 1225. Misty, can you read the ordinance?
Ordinance 1225, amending City of Lake Mills ordinance, section 660-44, official zoning map, City of Lake Mills, Wisconsin. Part of parcel identification number 24607132313000. Owner, Lake Mills Feed and Grain Inc., 1219 South Main Street.
All right, since this is the third reading, we're ready to move forward with a vote on the ordinance. Could I have a motion to that favor?
I'll make a motion that we approve ordinance 1225 regarding the zoning amendment for Lake Mills Feed and Grain.
Second.
All right, is there any discussion on this? No discussion, let's move forward to a rule call.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Ms. Quinler?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Mrs. Bishop?
Aye.
Ms. Quinler?
Aye.
Motion pass five zero.
All right, so this moves us to item 10, recommendation for future agenda items. Any recommendations?
I haven't heard, Greg. Have we decided when we're going to hold that second orientation meeting? We had talked about sometime in the middle of June, and then the third one at the end of June. Has anything gone, has any survey been sent out on that yet?
I have not moved anything forward on that. I have my notes back at home. I don't have them with me right now, but I think we were trying to target that first Thursday in June was my belief, and we'll need to send out information, see if that works for everybody. Does that work for you, Steve?
Well, I hope it works for me. I pray to God it works for me. But, yes, that should work. Is Misty going to send out some questions to everybody to see if we can make that work?
I thought at our meeting last week, that was what the next step was, that Misty was going to send out the date options and ask for our availability.
I will send something out this weekend, and Steve, I'll coordinate with you as well, just to make sure that I know what your availability is and what dates you're thinking.
And then, Misty, I believe we're going to try to fit in a third session. It would be the second session in June, towards the end of the month?
Yeah, I believe there's a fifth Tuesday, June 29th, the fifth Tuesday, which we don't have any meetings ever on fifth Tuesdays, unless they're basically special or work sessions. And I believe that that's when we're looking at doing a third one.
Fantastic. All right. Any other comments on future agenda items?
I would like to say that after we approve Park Board minutes, there are some things I want to give you all a heads up about, so that you have an idea of what's coming. So, perhaps the items on Parks Board agenda would be worth discussing.
Is that the next meeting, Misty? Good question, right? I think it's the next meeting.
I think so.
Okay.
I have the meeting minutes, and we can approve them at the next one.
All right.
She probably didn't hear.
I'm sorry, did I miss something?
Will the Parks minutes be approved at the next meeting, the second meeting of May?
It's my understanding from talking with my deputy clerk when she was putting this together, that she was waiting to receive them still. They hadn't come to her in final form, I believe. I'm going, I'm kind of shooting from the hip here, but that's my recollection from our conversation when she was doing the packet last week, Thursday, about whether or not to put them onto this agenda. Were there some changes made at the Parks Board meeting to the minutes?
That's my mistake. I sent her the amended ones that happened from February, but did not send her the April. So, the April ones are now in her inbox.
Excellent, and that's why. So, if it missed this packet, then they would go to the next one. Those aren't at a time crunch, because we're just typically accepting them. So, if they're not here, then they just get moved when we do receive them.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And as a point of clarification, I recall from a prior council meeting, before I was on the council there, we can't discuss items from those meetings until the minutes have been accepted. Is that right?
It was discussed that you can use information from those meetings as part of correspondence.
I would say that you can discuss whatever's included on your agenda. So, regardless of whether meetings are adopted or passed by a particular board and passed on to you, if you guys set it as an agenda item, you certainly can discuss it.
So, in other words, if Michelle has some items that she wants to discuss with us, she either needs to ask Greg to put it on, or...
So long as it's clearly stated on the agenda, yes. And dictate whether, I mean, state whether or not action is expected on that item.
Okay, thanks. Well, then, I would add the story walk. The library story walk, I'm sorry, library story walk.
All right, I got it.
Thank you.
All right, so we'll move to agenda item number 11, which is to move to closed session. Misty, can you read that?
Be in to closed session pursuant to 19.85 sub 1 sub E, deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, the investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require closed session. And 19.85 sub 1 sub G, conferring with legal counsel who is running oral or written advice concerning strategy be adopted by the body with respect to litigation in which it is or is likely to be involved.
Dan, do we need a motion to move into this? Motion, please?
Make a motion that we take a five-minute recess and then convene into closed session.
Second.
All right. Any discussion? All right, let's move to the rule call.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Mrs. Bishop?
Aye.
Ms. Quinell?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Motion pass five zero.
All right, thank you. So, we'll take a five-minute recess and then move into closed session. Thank you.
Goodbye.